Call this meeting to order. At this time, Hannah, would you please?
Hi.
Hannah, would you pledge allegiance? Thank you, God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah, at this time, I'm just going to read our protocol. So, welcome to our meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us. Before we begin, I would like to review a couple of items. Governing Board meetings are a business meeting of the Board, held in public, and although public participation is encouraged, it is not a meeting of the public. As Board President, it is my duty to carry out the meeting in an efficient and uninterrupted manner so that the matters on the agenda are addressed and the business and operations of the district can seamlessly continue. It is also my duty to maintain an orderly, respectful, and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices, and opinions are welcome. Please refrain from speaking out while other person has the floor. At the appropriate time on the agenda, I will recognize individuals wishing to provide public comment in accordance with Board Bylaw 9323. At that time, I will provide further guidelines regarding public comment. California Penal Code 403 states, "Every person who, without authority of law, will wilfully disturbs, excuse me, or breaks up any assembly or meeting that is not unlawful, in its character, other than an assembly or meeting referred to in Section 302 of the Penal Code or Section 18340 of the Elections Code, is guilty of a misdemeanor." Lastly, the California Department of Public Health strongly recommends masking indoors to prevent the spread of COVID-19 variants. It continues to be our practice that CNUSD will follow the CDPH guidance. Thank you, and so we will begin. And so, we'll start with the report from closed session. In closed session, I will read these individually, so we'll start off here, and then at the end, then I'll have Mr. Gonzalez say a couple comments. In closed session, a motion was made by Mary Barra and second by Bill Pollock that the Board approved the certificated management reclassification of Myra Herrera to Elementary School Principal Harada Elementary School effective July 1, 2022, four to zero. In closed session, a motion was made by Bill Pollock and second by Jose Lallas that the Board approved the certificated management reclassification of Michael Carlin to Elementary School Assistant Principal Highland Elementary School effective July 1, 2022, with a vote of four to zero. In closed session, a motion was made by Bill Pollock and second by Jose Lallas that the Board approved the certificated management reclassification of Kristin DiAmato to Elementary School Assistant Principal Anthony Elementary School effective July 1, 2022, in a vote of four to zero. In closed session, a motion was made by Mary Barra and second by Jose Lallas that the Board approved the certificated management reclassification of Nancy Alfaro to Elementary School Assistant Principal of Adams Elementary School effective July 1, 2022, with a vote of four to zero. Congratulations. In closed session, a motion was made by Bill Pollock and second by Jose Lallas that the Board approved the certificated management reclassification of Allison Kano to Elementary School Assistant Principal at Vicencia Elementary School effective July 1, 2022, with a vote of four to zero. In closed session, a motion was made by Jose Lallas and second by Mary Barra that the Board approved the certificated management reclassification of Tiffany Vosberg to Elementary School Assistant Principal at Coronita Elementary School effective July 1, 2022, with a vote of four to zero. And last, and definitely not least, in closed session, a motion was made by Jose Lallas and second by Bill Pollock that the Board approved the classified management reclassification of Tammy Bear to Coordinator of Expanded Learning Program Educational Services effective July 1, 2022, with a vote of four to zero. Congratulations. At this time, Mr. Gonzalez will have a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Merrickine. It's always a great time of year when we're getting ready to staff our schools for the upcoming school year. We do this every spring and summer, so it's an exciting time. And we take, obviously, our leadership development very seriously in this district, and we know that all of these candidates who were approved are phenomenal and just going to really help propel the schools and the sites that they're at to new heights. So, it's with great pleasure that I want to introduce them, and if they have anybody with them tonight, they certainly can introduce them. We always say we hire the family when we hire our administrators, so Myra Herrera, the new principal at Harada Elementary.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
And Michael Carlin, who will be joining the administrative team at Highland as the new AP.
I have with me my wife, who's CNUSD.
Yeah.
And then, also at home, watching my parents and my grandma, who just got home from the hospital today. Grandma, I love you very much.
Thank you.
And we have Kristin DiAmato, who will be the next AP at Susan B. Anthony. And Nancy Alfaro, who will be joining the administrative team at Adams as the Assistant Principal.
My husband, my two little girls, my parents, and a lot of friends and family.
And I'd like to introduce Allison Kano, who will be the next Assistant Principal at Vicencia Elementary.
My son Zachary, my parents.
I'm thrilled to announce this next one. Tiffany Vosberg will be the Assistant Principal at Coronita Elementary.
I'm here with truly my family, so many friends.
Hi.
Hi, sweetie.
Ah, that's right. Very good. And last but not least, we have Tammy Bear, who, in an introductory position for us, the position is Coordinator of our Expanded Learning Programs. We are super excited that she threw her hat in the ring, and will be kicking off that position for us as the new coordinator. Congratulations to you all.
Congratulations, and you can see the kind of leadership that we have sparked here at CNUSD. A lot of districts are envious, I'll guarantee you. Thank you. Okay, moving on the agenda, we're going to go ahead and do the adoption of the minutes for May 3, 2022, for our regular business meeting. Hannah, your vote?
Motion.
Okay, go ahead and vote, please.
Do we move?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, motion, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Second.
Jose? Now we can vote. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to do, okay, we'll just give a few seconds, I'm sorry. After the next group, okay. We'll let them go. Sorry, guys, they're all excited. Okay, at this time, we have a very special recognition of our 2021-22 student board member Hannah Poor. Hannah, come on up. Hannah, although she's a junior, she's got one more year with us, we still want to give her a stole that she will wear when she graduates.
Thank you.
And we also have a little gift for her, too. And hopefully, she comes back and speaks with us and let us know what she's doing in her senior year. But thank you, Hannah, we love you.
All right.
Oh, yeah, group photo, please, group photo.
That's what I do, I put it away, I forget. Okay, today, we also have our next representative, and so Judy Nell.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make an introduction, I just would like to say what a pleasure it's been meeting Hannah, and she did a tremendous job this year, and we will surely miss her. Good news is that she's only a junior, so we might see her back here visiting from time to time next year, so, thank you. So, at this time, though, it is my pleasure to introduce the IDSC, the Inter-District Student Council, finally nominated a R22, '23 incoming student board member. He comes to us from Roosevelt High School, and his name is Daniel Zhao. So, at this time, I'd like him to stand up and be recognized.
Daniel, can you come up and tell us a little bit about you, please?
And while he's making to the podium, Daniel will be starting with us the month of September.
Okay, great, fantastic. Daniel?
All right, so, is it on? It is on. All right, bye-bye. So, hi, everyone, as you already know, my name's Daniel Zhao, and it's such an honor to be here tonight. So, I will be a senior at Eleanor Roosevelt High School next year. Inside of school, I will also be the ASP president of Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and I'm also involved in class council. Now, outside of school, I'm involved in Boy Scouts, and I'm currently working on my Eagle rank. And once again, it's such an honor to be here and to be able to serve this amazing district and the students within it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're looking forward to having you on the Board. Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to move on to our next presentation, our special recognition of the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, also known as the CAC. So, Mr. Reggie Tompkins, Dr. Tompkins.
This is Maude King, and fellow Board members and Executive Cabinet. I'm intimidated by Daniel. That was awesome, wasn't it? I'd like to call up Mrs. Randa Fletcher and Misty Hamlin. These ladies served countless hours in support of all of our special education students in this district through the CAC committee, and we just want to make sure that we're not going to be remiss in not recognizing the fact that you guys have committed so much of your time and so much of your dedication to this work. So, we really appreciate you, and we want to make sure that we acknowledge you in public, so thank you very much for all that you do. I assume there's going to be some picture opportunities, right? Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, you want to do the picture first? Okay.
They're going to remain up here because they will be presenting right after this picture opportunity.
Right there, ladies.
One, two. One more, one, two.
Thank you, ladies. So now, they're going to give us a Special Education Community Advisory Committee presentation, so you may continue on, ladies.
Good evening, Board and Executive Board. How do we press the top button? The right one? Okay. My name is Randa Fletcher, and, okay. My name is Randa Fletcher, I am the chairperson for the Special Education CAC, and this is Misty Hamlin, she is our vice chair. We're going to go ahead and recap the '21-'22 school year. What does the CAC do? The responsibility of the CAC shall be to involve interested parents, students, teachers, okay, sorry, education specialists and consultants in advising the District Board of Education and its administrative and professional staff of the unique requirements of students with IEPs and to advise the administration of the SAB. So, on this slide is our combination of our CAC members. On the left is our Board Officers, on the right is our Board Members, and we're a combination of district staff and parent members. So, why does CAC, or what does the CNUSD have a CAC? Well, you saw we are state mandated, but we support primarily students with disabilities in the district. Most of these are going to be students with IEPs, but in certain instances where there's, you know, discrimination policies or concerns, we do support students with 504 plans as well. But primarily, it's mostly kids with IEPs. We compile, or our students that we support compile about 14% of our district enrollment. This number, we believe, is low, as you can see on the bottom of our slide. The last reported students with special needs in the district on IEPs was in 2019, so we believe that that number is actually quite higher. We know that post-pandemic, we had students qualifying under OHI with increased anxiety, depression, emotional disturbance, that experienced trauma post-pandemic as well, so that 14% is actually probably higher. We also are a group that encumbers the largest amount, or one of the largest amounts, on the general fund, mostly due to unfunded mandates. We have over $51 million per year that encumbers on the general fund. When we are not supported as a group, we are also one of the most highly litigious demographics in the district. We looked at our due process expenditures on the district's budget, you can see that it was just under $1 million for the 2020-2021 school year, and then the following year it increased to over $1 million. Okay, so, one of our major roles as a CAC is to provide trainings, that we are committed to providing high-quality presenters to our families. We decided to have four series of trainings via Zoom. We had the highest attendance in years, and we want to continue future trainings via Zoom. So, on this slide is our first two trainings that we held. The first one, our presenter in October is a licensed educational psychologist and a BCBA. Her name is Dr. Chris Davidson. She did a training on understanding how test scores make educational decisions for your child. Our next training that we had was in November, and it was with an attorney, Richard Isaacs, that represents special needs families, and an advocate, Valerie Apoheian. So, they went over how to interpret a over how to interpret assessments into FAP.
So then, part three of our series, we had the honor and privilege of having Jack Robinson. We had a most recent case law, presidential case law in the federal courts passed that reestablished the FAP standard for our students with disabilities. Mr. Jack Robinson was the litigating attorney in that case, and he was kind enough to present for free, well, it was free to our families, not free to CAC, but he did a presentation on specifically that case and what the new standard is that districts have to provide FAP for our students with disabilities, and then also looking at placement and what's called least restrictive environment. And then for the last, we had Sarah Young, who was the only district, I guess, representation. She's a council for the district who reported, or she did a training on parental rights and safeguards to our families.
So we sent out a survey to our families, asking a series of questions, and with those answers, we came up with our training topics for next year. So the training topics for next year are going to be how to advocate for your child, adult transition process, IEP 101, and selecting appropriate placements. We want to be able to continue to keep our trainings via Zoom format and to be able to record it for families to review it at a later time, if they can view it the time that we provide it. And Wednesdays and Thursdays evenings, beginning at 7:00, appear to be the most popular time to have our training, so we want to try to provide them at that time for our families. In April, we held Virtual Resource Fair. As you may remember, in years past, we used to have an art show, but due to COVID, we chose to have a virtual resource of vendors, such as recreation, ABA, sports, et cetera, that would benefit our special needs community. Next year, we want to take a different direction with our fair, we want to have it in person. And then in May, the CAC joined the SALPA, and attended legislation day virtually since Sacramento office was under construction. So we supported at least two bills, SB 1113, that helps to remove barriers to inclusion in the gen ed classroom, such as mandated training and guided textbooks, and supported AB 2121, which would create a resource lead for dispute prevention and ADR.
Just to highlight some of the achievements that we've had this year, at every board meeting, we do do a SALPA report where the administrator comes in and kinda unveils what's kinda happening in special ed in the district. We had some, three really great ones. One was the Brown Act, which was more, I think, for us to make sure we were operating as a board legally. But we had the Orton-Gillingham training that was done to kinda let parents know, this is a new training that we're providing our staff, here's kinda what to expect. Then also FastBridge. And what's important to know about FastBridge is, we had some legislation passed that looks at dyslexia and what some of the proactive interventions need to be done to all students, so we can start catching this with early intervention. And so the FastBridge was one of the ways that the district is utilizing a program to align with that legislation. Another thing we did is we expedited a resolution to, there was a lack of clean drinking water that was being afforded to our students and staff at Victus Bauer, and we were able to bring some highlighted information to that to expedite the resolution. We also facilitated greater access to the parent rights and information, those procedural rights and safeguards, and additional resources to students that were experiencing mental health crisis on the district's website. So we were happy about that. We've also updated the district's CAC webpage to provide additional resources to families. And then, we were able to have some representation from the CAC to make sure our students with disabilities had a voice when it came to LCAP and the superintendent committees.
Some of the things that we amended this year was the CNUSD CAC website. The links that are on the left side are all the vendors that we decided to add to the resource page for families to easily click on and utilize the sites. We also updated our Facebook page. We had two Facebook pages, we condensed it down to one. We updated our CAC logo. We have families posting and asking questions on our site, and we are posting resources for families as well. And we post our parent trainings on there for parents to view later. We're also working on updating our CAC brochures, and we would like to have them at all school sites and at the parent center for families to have.
So we still have some work to do. We have some pending parent concerns, obviously, that we'll continue to address and look into next year. One of them is the, just the lack of disconnect between the districts working with CAC on inclusive practices. I will say, however, that courtesy of Dr. Lollas, he did meet with some of our board members, and they are working on the conversation for an inclusive practice policy through the district, which we're really excited about. There's the teachers and aides not being supported. An example I was given a while ago was when we rolled out the Orton-Gillingham program for training, the teachers were like, great, we have this training, but we don't have the materials that we need to implement the training. That, I believe, has been remedied, but it's these kinds of hiccups that these, our teachers aren't feeling supported. IEE cost caps are a huge one right now. This is reflective, and so students with disabilities, when they disagree with the district's assessment, can put that in writing and then seek an individualized educational, or IEE, individual... Assess, evaluation, thank you. And that is to be at no cost to them. So what the district has done is put a cost cap on these IEEs, which really are not commensurate with the industry standard for these professionals. And our students are entitled to get highly qualified professionals when it comes to their services, and so these cost caps have rendered to be quite oppressive for our families. And so we would like to address that. The removal of TSAs as support systems to students with disabilities. The aid situation, I know, is quite messy right now. We're having, number five, one-to-one aid training and RBT structure implementation. We've asked for the SALPA to come in and look at the, what we thought was the autism program, how is it structured? And it just came across very disorganized, so we still have some concerns about that. The aides themselves have reported to us that they don't have the staff to fill in for their students so that they can attend a training, because the trainings are done at inopportune times. So those are some of the concerns that we're dealing with. The Orton-Gillingham certifications, there's a difference between training and certified, and so there's some concern that maybe some of these staff are being trained, but they're not actually certified. And so, again, this falls under the, are, the, the staff that's teaching our students, are they, meeting that highly qualified criteria? And then, this has been going on for years, the multi-tier, or the multiple SST meetings that happen for students over and over and over again, when there's reason to believe that a student might have a suspected area of need and qualify for special educations. Teachers have been, have been not coerced, but really guided into continuing more interventions rather than triggering that assessment process. And so that is resulting in child fine violations, and that is costly for the district. It's also interfering with that intervention that could be done at an early, at an early age. So part of that, of our concerns, is that we want to create more proactive access to those parental rights and safeguards to families. Families are not gonna know what they don't know. They need to know they have these rights. They need to know how to go about asking for those assessments. But they're not gonna know it unless they get access to those parental rights and safeguards. So those are some of the concerns that we have.
So last, we just wanna say thank you to Bill Pollak, Mary Barra, and Jose Lollas for attending our meetings, our trainings. We really appreciate you coming to our meetings, you seeing what we're about, and collaborating with us, especially Dr. Lollas, meeting with some of our board members, working on those inclusive practices that we are wanting to have within the district. So we want to continue that relationship with you, especially with our executive cabinet. We would love for you guys to start attending as you are, but more. It would be nice. And to actually be part of our board, if you want to speak on behalf of anything, like Dr. Lollas joined in and spoke. So if we can continue that, I'll keep sending you emails, keep inviting you guys, and we hope to have you. So, do you have any questions for us?
Comment? Yeah, and you mentioned me. I've been attending probably some three, four meetings, I'm just listening. And since my work, my real work is on inclusive education, and I've published work on that area, I had a coffee with a couple of board members, and I said my ideas, and we talked about it, nothing solid, just sharing ideas and experiences. And I think from listening to your meetings, there's a lot of issues that you cover that personally, I don't really understand. But by listening to you, I'm able to really internalize what those areas are. I wonder if our cabinet and superintendent will be open to some kind of a dialogue, because a report is good, because we can ask questions, it'll be a Q&amp;A. But at the, you know, I know, at the end of the day, I know Sam is keeping, keep using that expression tonight, so it got into me, too. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that we have a direct dialogue within the bounds of legalities, if it's legal, because we've done it in the past. We've done think tank, we've done discussion group, we've done dialogue. So I wonder if that is something that the CAC board and the cabinet will be interested in exploring, because especially, there's a lot of kids with special needs that we need to take into account. When you look at your AXA, your journal, or NSBA, or CSBA journals, they talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. What does that mean? The trend is here, we cannot have inclusion if we are not paying attention to diversity and equity. So I think that is the missing piece. We took care of diversity and equity, because we have a policy. But when we talk about inclusion, we have, that is something we need to explore, and we're not, it's not made up. Look at your AXA, AXA Journal, look at your NSBA or CSBA, all over the place, and DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion. I think the parents and the CIC are on target. When I listen to their meetings, I say, wow, really? You're talking about inclusive practices, inclusive education? You're on, you're on target. So I will say.
Thank you. We would be open to that.
Yeah, just a quick comment, President Marokine, if I may. So first of all, thank you for the presentation, Misty, appreciate it, and also Randa, and your dedication. You know, it's critical, but that's how we get better, bottom line. So appreciate the input. We will continue to look, obviously, at ways to dialogue, absolutely. That's something that I've spoken to executive cabinet and directly to Dr. Thompson. In fact, Dr. Thompson, I'd like you to maybe elaborate a little bit more. But I think it's inclusivity, and it's super important. It is outlined in our strategic plan, and it's something that we need to continue to look at and see what ways we can continue to get better. So with that, I'm gonna turn over, I do want Dr. Tompkins to address some of these pieces, because it falls under his wing. Thank you.
He said Tompkins the third time, that's good. So, yes, yes, we had good conversation about some of the concerns that we see in this presentation. And I wanna remind folks, we actually have an audit that was completed a while back, and that audit wasn't just fiscal, it was also about meeting the needs of all of our students. And in that audit, MTSS and Universal Design for Learning was included as major recommendations. And so as you see us, as we're building our MTSS structure, we are definitely moving forward in that direction and following those recommendations throughout the, the report that we got with regard to the fiscal side and meeting the needs of students before parents feel the need to request assessments. So what are we doing in our system to meet the needs of our students where they are at that particular time? So we've worked on that, we continue to move that forward. We've had major trainings on trauma-informed practices, including inclusive practices within that training, and that was mandatory throughout the district. So we've taken those recommendations from that audit. Like I said, it was about fiscal responsibility, but at the same time, there was a major focus on how do we meet the needs of our students. When we talk about the communication, I believe the CAC advisory is that, it is that structure to have these conversations. And how we do that, that's something that we just need to talk about. But that is the structure in place to gather that feedback and that input in an advisory nature, and then see how we can work together, but put plans together around those ideas. So definitely on page with that. So a lot of work going on, but you know, I've said it before, we're always trying to get better. We're never, never gonna arrive. And I say it that way because we're always striving to meet the needs of our students and our families as best we can. So I really appreciate the feedback and look forward to continue working with the group. And we have a team that works with them, so with Tricia and Don, working with the CAC committee on a regular basis at every meeting.
Thank you. Bill?
I just wanted to thank you guys, too, for continually reaching out, and that really does help, the emails. I did attend some of the meetings and the trainings, and I really enjoyed them, and so I'm looking forward to some more of those. I do miss the art show, I do have to admit. And I think being in person, doing something in person and being able to attend, I think will be very nice, whether it's an art show or an expo or something. But I did miss that, that was wonderful when we were able to have them. Anyway, thank you guys for your continual work.
So I want to thank you also. However, I'm a little confused here, because I'm seeing an overlay, because, okay, being an educator myself, doing plenty of IEPs as a classroom teacher, we didn't have groups like that, like you, that would come in and speak. It's great that the parents are getting trained, however, I'm seeing a little overlap here, where, are you trying to tell the teachers how to do this, or are you just trying to tell the parents how to do this? I'm confused by what I'm seeing here in front of me.
How to do what?
How to aid them and getting help for the students and trying to train, train the parents that they need to work with these groups, making the IEPs in order to get what their students need. So I remember that when I sat at these meetings, that I would sit there and we would meet with the parents one-on-one, and all together, the administrative team and the teachers, with the student and their parents, would develop these IEPs together. So, and if they had questions, then we would come back and meet again. So I, are you a separate entity? I'm not sure of what's going on here.
So it's the confusion about what our role as CAC is to the district. Correct, okay. So, yeah, the Code of California Education, they established this mandated group, and we are, our role is advisory. So we speak to parents, we get feedback from really anybody that's going on in the district, like I said, primarily students with disabilities. And so we take that information, we have a board meeting, and we try to have a dialogue with the district to say, these are some issues that are going on, how can we remedy it? We know that this is what our students are entitled to under the law, how is that being put into practice? If there's a concern that even the teachers or the aides that is involved in how a student would be getting FAP, we would be that liaison to say, hey, we're hearing this information, how can we improve this so that the students are getting what they're entitled to under the law?
So the parents are bringing these issues to you regarding their teachers and...
They're in the meeting, so in the meeting, they can also do a public comment like they, like we do here. We have a public comment section. So, for example, we had an aide do a public comment last month. So anybody could come in and do a public comment, or, you know, give a compliment, could be anything.
So, Dr. B, my concern is that we have a teacher union, we have a CSA representatives, and they're the ones that need to bring these issues up into their, to you. I mean, there is protocol on how this works, and I'm seeing a lot of gray area here. And so I just want to make sure that we understand, each of us has a role, and each of us needs to follow that so that we can work together. And that's the whole idea. I think that's what you're trying to do, is to work together so that we can resolve some of these issues, yes. And a lot of times, we don't know everything, the same as you, you don't know everything as well. So that's why we need to communicate, and the communication may be lacking, I'm not sure. But I do apologize, because I haven't been able to make your meetings, because I have many other ones to go to, too. And so we just, sometimes, I'm... many other ones to go to too, and so we just, sometimes, I'm glad that my colleagues are attending, so they can bring this information to us.
I think a think tank would be a great start. We have some amazing minds and experience on our board in education and in special education, and that I think would be a safe place to start, to really just be vulnerable about the issues and collaborate on some solutions. If the district is willing, we would love that. This is kind of what we've been really hoping for, for a number of years.
Yeah, at this time, at this time, that is something that we are not venturing down that avenue, because we have other things, like the LOC program. That is going to be a big focus, because we have received a tremendous amount of money, which will be also geared towards special education. There's also a lot of money from special education that we're going to need to coordinate with you all on those issues. So having a separate committee is going to water down what we need to get through to get these monies into places where they need to be, especially for our special education. We just talked about that a while back, and then Mary and I are going to go up north to Sacramento and talk more about that as well. So we know that more money is coming to special education, we know that more money is coming to these extended learning opportunity programs, and I know that Ms. Bear is going to do an awesome job for us to make sure that those monies go to the students and their needs, and so we'll meet it that way. But organizing a think tank right now is not something that we will go down and venture at this point in time, so.
Would the district be willing to include the CAC on those conversations and the allocation of that money?
That, Mr. B...
Yeah, let me, just to clarify a couple of things here. So again, thank you for the presentation. The, we have a, at the end of the day, it's taking action, right? And getting better at what we're doing, just like Mr. Tompkins said. So one of the things that we need to do, we need to look at the recommendations that we're, it's an advisory committee, we need to look at those recommendations, I think they're good recommendations, and we need to fit them in and align them to our FIGMAT report that we have. And so I appreciate the comment about maybe getting too spread out, if you will, because that's what I gathered from you. So, so yeah, so it's, as long, as it fits our FIGMAT action plan and our strategic plan, and there's room, I see what was out there. We will continue to work that way. Because I do think that developing one more process, we already have a process in place, like Mr. Tompkins said, Dr. Tompkins said, we have these monthly meetings. One of the suggestions was involve the executive committee. So that's a great suggestion. So those are some things that we can do as well, so we can partner. So I'd like to keep it there, so that we can remain in our focus and follow our strategic plan that we have. But there's opportunities, and we need to look, we need to continue to look for dialogue opportunities, absolutely.
And I'm glad to see that you included them in the superintendent's group too, so you have representation there too as well. So that's awesome.
Can I make a comment?
One more comment, please.
Yeah, I think I trust Dr. Tompkins, because I heard him spoke. I trust you, we have excellent staff, we have Don, we have Tricia, and I think it's just a matter of trust to do a dialogue, and I think we'll learn more about the issue more than we can imagine, if there's a dialogue on the table, including Don and Dr. Tompkins and our parents, who represent the special ed students.
Absolutely, I do want to make one last comment, and I hope it doesn't come across defensive, because it's not intended. We've been through a pandemic, and the first year did not work for a lot of our students, and definitely did not work with our students with IEPs. That's a given. The second year, the governor, the state adjusted and said, we want to make sure that we don't have this virtual instruction, we want to make sure we have face-to-face instruction. So we want in-person instruction, all the legislators weighed in, and those directors were provided to us. Part of that was also keep your independent study program, and so we did that. I say that because we've been through the pandemic, and that has accelerated some of the issues, and so, again, but let's work together and continue to work together, but the issues have been there, many of them, but the field continues to change, and we need to stay on top of this.
So thank you, ladies, for your concerns, and we'll take that into consideration as we continue to move forward, and that's the whole idea, moving forward for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, we're ready, Dr. Simon, for Leveraging Student Strengths for the 21st Century.
Thank you, President Marakine, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Carlos Flores. He will be highlight, we're going to be highlighting two schools today, Garrettson Elementary School and Rondo School of Discovery, and at this moment, I'm going to turn it over to Carlos Flores. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, thank you guys for having us. So one of the best part of our jobs is when we get to celebrate some of our schools, and behind every school is an amazing principal, and teachers, and classified staff, but also parents. And so you see that tonight, a lot of parent support for these schools, and so we're super happy to turn over this time to Ms. Anna Luna, principal at Garrettson Elementary.
Good afternoon, wonderful board and audience. Thank you for your patience as we set up our students. I want you to know they've been very patiently waiting to come out and greet you, so give us a few minutes while we start up. Gracias padres por su paciencia. Estamos coordinando el inicio del programa, así que gracias por su paciencia mientras comenzamos con los niños.
Hello.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Wonderful Corona Norco Unified School District Board, thank you for having Garrettson Elementary. Gators, can we say good evening?
Good evening!
We are so thankful to be invited to represent not just Garrettson Elementary, but we get to showcase many of the wonderful programs that are in our elementary schools throughout Corona Norco Unified School District. I am proud principal, Anna Luna, and I have with me some very special guests. We have our Garrettson students, we have our Garrettson families, can I get a round of applause from our families? My amazing assistant principal, Letizia Mira Montes. We have our wonderful counselor, Ms. Ramirez, Melissa Ramirez. Our two teachers on special assignment, Mrs. Bugarín and Dr. Gomez, Venus Bugarín, Dr. Gomez. And our wonderful teachers, Mrs. Lisa Frank. Mrs. Megan Gutierrez. Mrs. Daisy Gallardo. And Mrs. Heather Hock. And at Garrettson Elementary, every staff member is part of the team. We also have with us our Classified Expanded Learning Per educator, Mr. Sean Haverstick. Students, if we will, please face the board and show the Gator Way. Thank you. So today, we're here to showcase how we leverage student strengths through the many programs that are not just at Garrettson, but at many elementary schools, in order to prepare our 21st century global citizens. Garrettson is home to many programs, perhaps the most at any elementary school. We're a Title I school, we're home to one of the largest numbers of English learners, we have the Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program, the GATE, Gifted and Talented Education Magnet Program, GATE, Avid Elementary, a school-wide in grades TK through six, and we also have the After School Expanded Learning Program through the ACES grant, and of course, above all, the Gator Way. Gators, can I get three Gator snaps and a Go Gators?
One, two, three, Go Gators!
Some of the history behind Garrettson Elementary is that it was established on September 16th, 1960, 61 years ago. GATE began in the 1980s, and our after-school program began over 20 years ago and has gone through many name changes, PASA, ACES, and currently Expanded Learning. Our Dual Language Immersion Program began 19 years ago in 2002. Our Avid is since 2016, and as you can see in our picture, our Garrettson Elementary has gotten a huge upgrade. We want to thank our community for the Measure GG construction. So who does Garrettson serve? It serves over 1,037 students, yes. So that is TK through six, and as you can see, the diversity of our students, we have 80% Latino Hispanic, all the way to 12% students with disabilities. So in every program, everyone is represented. Just because there's a bigger number and a percentage doesn't mean that they are only in certain programs. All of our kids represent every program, DLI, GATE, Expanded Learning, Avid. Home of Scholars and Champions, I'm really honored to be here to represent all of our students, and it is a pleasure to have all of these kids and their families representing us. We are a diverse school, as you can see. We are an innovative school, as you can see. Every single one of our scholars is our future. They are the home of the Scholars and Champions. Whether every family member is here, whether they're representing DLI, EXL, GATE, Jeanette and Avid, every family that you see behind us chooses to be at Garrettson. Whether they're, maybe they're representing EXL, DLI, and Avid, but they're very proud to be here. We're proud to have them here at our school, and we're very happy to be both administrators to an amazing organization. Now with that, we have a special, we have very special performances today, and we're going to start with our Jeanette Avid, and to represent that group, we have Ms. Gutierrez.
Hello, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Ben Roestro, executive cabinet, and families of our Gator students. I am Mrs. Gutierrez, a third-grade general education teacher. I am here to represent all Gator Gen Ed teachers. Here at Garrettson, we are an avid school. We are using avid strategies that will help them become successful upon graduation and will close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college and their career readiness. Teachers use avid strategies to create engaging, rigorous, and student-centered learning environments to foster all learning styles. As Ben said before, we are an avid school, and we have been Avid Elementary for six years. On Wednesdays, our students wear our college shirts, as seen in multiple programs. The Avid team shares Google Slides school-wide with pre-made CASA's levels of questioning and a video about a college. Students watch a video and collaborate with classmates to answer their questions. Please welcome our amazing Gator Gen Ed and Avid students.
And now, now here to introduce the DLI program, Mrs. Gallardo.
Dear Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Ben Roestro and executive cabinet, and families of our Gator community. I am Maestra Gallardo, a DLI third-grade teacher, and I am here representing the DLI program. Our district recognizes the importance of preparing students for the 21st century, and is proud to offer the DLI Dual Language Immersion Program in six elementaries, two intermediate, and two high schools. This program offers students the opportunity to learn Spanish and English, or Mandarin in English, with the goal of becoming bilingual and proficient in each language. The Spanish program reflects the 90-10 model, where the instructional day consists of 90% in Spanish and 10% in English, starting in kindergarten, and increasing to 50% English and 50% Spanish in fifth grade. At Garrettson, we take great pride in our Dual Language Immersion Program. As this year marks the 19th year providing this program, we believe our students are not only learning the target language, but they are becoming bicultural, belligerent, and in a not-too-distant future, citizens of the world. Please help me welcome our third-grade students, Maestra Martinez's and Maestra Gallardo's
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Good evening, community members. My name is Lisa Frank, and I'm here tonight to represent the GATE Magnet Program at Garrettson Elementary. In simplest terms, a gifted child learns at a faster pace, uses larger vocabulary, asks more questions, and needs activities that are challenging and more complex. Garrettson GATE Program serves 3rd through 6th grade in a self-contained classroom, is one of the 3 GATE Magnet Schools in our district. Schools also feed into Garrettson programs from other schools. Garrettson's GATE teachers provide enrichment through differentiation. This can be seen in project or performance-based learning, novel inquiry, document analysis, critical and creative thinking skills, and student choice selection. Tonight, we have the 5th grade GATE class representing our play in Performing Arts: The Revolutionary War. The song they'll be singing is Kings &amp; Counselor.
Sorry, we're getting, getting our group back together. Well, thank you, Madam President, Board, Superintendent. Thank you for this opportunity to showcase our after-school program. Our students, some of these arrive at 8:00 in the morning all the way until 6:00 PM. So they're there for a long time. They're learning and having fun after school. So we wanted to showcase a little bit about that. Our students, it's a daily after-school program from 3:00 to 6:00, so our students are there for quite a while. We currently have about 110. We can fill up to about 120 1st through 6th graders next year. We might have kinder, I believe. And it includes all our programs. Our DLI students are represented, our GATE students are represented, as well as our Avid students. We have literacy activities throughout the day from their scholastic program. We have STEAM enrichment activities, and we have our daily PE too. They're getting a lot of fresh air as well. The DLI classroom that we also built for our program houses our 1st through 3rd graders so that they have an opportunity to practice that literacy even after school. So we have a bilingual aid that helps support that during that time. And everything works in tandem with our Avid program, with our PBIS, and of course, our Gator Way Expectations. So today, we're gonna perform a recycle song that goes along with Mr. H.'s passion for composting, and he's begun that program. You see a picture there of what the students have been doing. He's helped build this. The students are taking their snacks and things that they didn't eat after school, but they're not throwing it away, they are recycling it. And so, we are very excited to share our passion with you. So you guys ready?
Bring your voices.
Voices, alright. Here we go, recycle!
Let's give them one more round of applause to all the Garrettson Gators! So as you can see, Garrettson Elementary showcases many of the programs throughout our district. We want to thank our wonderful Board of Education, the leadership with our Executive Cabinet, and the many wonderful leaders in Cronanarco Unified School District. To represent all of the principals, all of the teachers, all of the classified staff, we took an innovative approach to our board presentation. I want to thank you, Board, for always supporting Garrettson. Our Board Member Mary Helen Ibarra is at events giving away drive-through awards, coming to give out medals, showcasing, supporting our flag football teams. But this is really not a one-person, not a one-team approach. Garrettson is dynamic, it's diverse, it's equity in action. Every program that we showcased is an opportunity to create, to really create a differentiated path for our 21st century global citizens. We're leveraging the abilities for our students to have opportunities that we cannot even imagine for them. Our kindergartners here, raise your hand, my kindergartners, class of 2034, are also part of this group. My Student Council leadership, who are my 5th and 6th graders, raise your hand, Student Council. I couldn't do it without them. Yes, give them a round of applause. We are also one of the 5 elementary schools that are part of the Soccer and Flag Football CNUSD Elementary tournaments, really trying to meet the whole child needs. So I definitely want to remind everybody that it really starts in TK. We are a TK through 12th grade district, and we want to make sure that our students have a strong foundation to continue to succeed. So as you think of all of the successes that you will see at the high school graduations, think about that foundation at the elementary level. We thank you for thinking of our students first with literacy, with math, and with also meeting the whole child needs. So, thank you all. I want to thank our wonderful patient families. Muchas gracias a todas las familias y su paciencia. Thank you to Mr. Carlos Flores for always representing our different English learner Dual Language Immersion and Equity at Garrettson. Gators, can you please stand up? Let's look to the Board, and let's give them the greatest honor a Gator can get. Three Gator snaps and a go Gators! Thank you, everyone. Look to your teacher for dismissal. Thank you so much, Board. We appreciate you. Have a good evening.
We're gonna wait, okay?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for our next presentation. We're just really excited. So, Mr. Flores, go ahead.
Okie dokie.
Fantastic.
Ni hao, wo jiao he dai an.
Ni hao, wo jiao con li di.
Hi, my name is Dane.
Hi, my name is Wo. And we are gonna share our classroom mission statement with you.
Women make change, change here, the way, easy, no need, easy, who, pen, yo, one, shah, easy, she, 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 she.
In our class, we will listen, learn, try, be a good friend to others, and have fun.
Now, we are going to share with you our 7 habits.
There are 7 habits, there are 7 habits, there are 7 habits that we need There are 7 habits, there are 7 habits, there are 7 habits that we need Habit 1 is be proactive, I'm in charge of me Habit 2 is begin with the end in mind, have a plan is good you see Habit 3 is put first things first, first we work, then we play Habit 4 is think win-win, I win you and we win today Habit 5 is seek first to understand, then to be understood Habit 6 is synergize because together, there's always good Habit 7 is sharpen the saw, because balance feels best When we learn the 7 habits, we'll be better than the rest. We'll be better than the rest.
我喜欢 writing Mandarin characters.
我喜欢听我的小妹妹的 Mandarin words each day.
谢谢
谢谢
Ni hao, wà chāo, Dr. D. Hello, my name is Dr. Dietrich. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. This is Dr. Rony McDonald, and we're going to present a little bit about our Mandarin immersion program, the first in the county at Rondo School of Discovery.
So at Rondo, our Mandarin immersion program is a one-way program that's a 50-50 model. So the students will attend English twice a week in their English class, for example, on Monday and Thursday, and then their Mandarin class on Tuesday and Friday, and then they alternate every other Wednesday because that's the early release day. As you can see on the diagram in front of you, the model in the elementary grades is a little different. Then when they get to middle school, they attend two classes. One class is a content class, and the other is a Mandarin class. And then they're available to pursue any other content, for example, the STEM, since we are a STEAM magnet school with a project-based learning framework with engineering design process. That also is a great straight pathway all the way through the East M at Roosevelt High School.
It's important to know that at Rondo, the Mandarin immersion program is part of our school, just like our school is part of the Mandarin immersion program. So we're also a leader me school, which I've actually got to present to you guys several different times, which as the kids share with you, they know the seven habits of five effective people. This is part of our whole school. So our Mandarin program then learns it in Mandarin. And we're also a STEAM magnet school, so we feature project-based learning as our instructional framework. And this is our engineering design process, and the kids also learn it in Mandarin. But it's also that the school embraces the program, goes both ways. So, for example, at the Lunar New Year, we had an entire PTA-supported celebration carnival to celebrate the Lunar New Year. It's where I got my fancy attire, thanks to my teachers. And so the whole school celebrates the four big Chinese events during, throughout the year, so that we all are kind of embracing and learning about the Chinese culture. And we're gonna kind of wrap it up and give you a chance to ask questions, even if you have some of the children here, but just a quick little video about our program.
这是的耶
The Rondo Mandarin immersion program is a 50-50 model. That means 50% of the instruction is in Mandarin, and 50% of the instruction is in English. We do this by rotating days. Students will learn a full day in English one day, and then a full day in Mandarin the next day.
这个是什么啊？
嘴巴
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 这是什么？
耳朵
耳朵
耳朵对了
头
鼻
眼睛
眼睛
镜子镜子拿出来
镜子镜子拿出来
今天是
今天是
十月
十月
今天是
四十
In class, students participate in readers theater, group projects related to project-based learning, and even sing songs and dance.
快快快走开，走
快快快走开，嘿
一样快走开，嘿嘿
我走得最快
快快快走开，走边
快快快走开，走边
Wrapping up our second year, the Mandarin immersion program at Philistine Rondo School of Discovery is thriving. We had a lottery for the incoming kindergarten class, and ended up with two full classes and 55 more students on our waiting list. We are excited about our additional supports coming next year, and can't wait to see these students when they finish at Rondo and then graduate from high school. Thank you for your support of the Mandarin immersion program at Rondo School of Discovery. Well, there's more.
你好
I'll go back here. Let's put that there. Okay, I would like actually to introduce our teacher, Eileen Wonderlick. She was the kindergarten teacher that you saw on film, so she was the one who started this program from scratch. She works tirelessly to write the curriculum as we go because Mandarin curriculum is hard enough to find, but to find it in a STEAM instructional framework doesn't exist. So she does it with our consultant as we go. She's actually gonna be moving into a TSA position next year to support the program in its entirety. And she's actually off-track right now. And yet she's here this evening, and she wants to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you guys for creating this awesome program. I am very thankful for this opportunity to not only showcase the language to our students, but to start them at the age of four when they start in the year-round program, to see the spark in their eye. I mean, when you look at Dane and Wolf, when they first start, most of the students, when they come in as a non-native student, the first two months, when I'm speaking to them, I'm sure, they look at me like, "What are you saying? I have no idea what you're saying." But the spark in their eye, when it actually clicks. And to be able to give them the opportunity to create a curriculum that actually blend the, sorry, blend curriculum from language arts to math to STEAM to project-based learning, it does take work, a lot of work. And, you know, the team that I'm on, they're so supportive, and they're willing to put in the work to make it one of a kind. And for the district to give the opportunity for us. I am forever grateful, and the students are picking up so much. And this is not a traditional way of teaching Mandarin. This is a way where they're learning to speak authentically, and this is the goal. For them to, during book talk, during language arts, when we're sharing a story, for them to raise their hand without any hesitation, without any fear, for them to say, "Oh,我喜欢，我也喜欢，我喜欢", you know, saying, saying all the things that it just brings back from your month one, month two. It is pure joy for me. And to see the whole school embracing the culture, to see the whole school embracing Lunar New Year, and for the PTA to support, for the parents' support, I mean, all the parents, you know, that I contact during off-track, I'm like, "Can you come help me? I'm so sorry. I know you're on vacation." And they're willing to put in the time. And I'm just forever grateful, and I'm thankful for all of you, thankful for all the support. Thank you. 谢谢
You guys have any questions?
Okay, Mr. Ball.
Well, I just wanna make sure we get some pictures. You guys too, but especially the students.
Of course.
I mean, if that was a portable mic, I'd want them to just do a mic drop. They were incredible. What, what, what are their names, Wolf and Dane? Man, you guys, what grade are you guys in? Kinder. Man, you guys, you guys are awesome. Great, great job. Thank you guys so much for being here and doing such a great job. Will you come up and take some, afterwards, take some pictures with us?
Hold on one second, okay. Mrs. Ybarra.
Yes, Wolf? That Wolf? Oh, okay. Wolf, what are you gonna do when you grow up with learning Mandarin and speaking English and maybe another language? What are you gonna do when you grow up?
Study water.
Wow! Dane? Oh.
Hydroling is why studying water is taught.
Geologist, there we go.
Dane? What are you gonna be when you grow up?
I'm gonna study cars.
Awesome!
Where are you gonna call your new car? It's not gonna be Tesla. What is it gonna be called? The Dane? All right.
I'm gonna get a Corvette.
Dr. Lawless.
Hey, well, when you speak more than one language, you'll be able to make a lot of money. And Dad won't have to buy it for you. You could buy it yourself.
Yeah, for, so for, what is the goal, the threshold? Are we getting the kids to learn content in Mandarin? And are we, I'm glad the teacher mentioned authentic because I can, I see a lot of didactic approaches. But you mentioned authentic, and so I think it's good because there's, there's so much, and you do project-based and all of that. And so I think it'll be good for our students, not just to learn language, but connected to the Mandarin culture, Chinese culture, because you learn language. Language and thought are connected to each other. They cannot just learn language by itself without the context of the culture. Otherwise, it'll be mimicking and mimicking and not really understanding. I'm sure you got the point, right? Thank you.
Quick question. So as you expand your program, how many teachers actually speak Chinese and how many actually only speak English?
Well, each year, with the 50-50 model, there's two classes, one Mandarin teacher and one English teacher. So the answer currently, two Mandarin speakers. I have a third on staff. We've hired, and we've hired another one for next year and are currently flying a spot. I'm trying to stockpile them as I come across good teachers because they can teach in English or in Mandarin. But each year, it's two teachers, one English and one Mandarin. It's kind of a unique position for the English teachers too because they're English-only teachers that speak, that work in an immersion program. It's a pretty unique situation.
And so I have the understanding that your staff also speaks Mandarin. You have a couple in the front office?
I have, yeah, I have one in the front office, actually Dr. Jane Lewis here. She, she was a substitute that we came across, and she got to work with the program for a period of time with some interventions and so forth. So, I mean, I have a Mandarin-speaking bilingual aide who just finished her student teaching and is working on completing her credential. Imagine she'll be in the program eventually. And then an eight-hour clerk in the front office, Hannah Chen, is fluent in Mandarin as well.
Fantastic. And so the idea is that once they graduate or leave Rondo, then they'll go to River Heights or to...
We feed into Ramirez, yeah.
You're gonna feed into Ramirez, okay.
Yeah, the plan would be at Ramirez and then the high school. So the 50-50 model, to kind of go back to your question, Dr. Lawless, is every, each teacher teaches language arts. So English language arts and Mandarin language arts. But then the rest of the content standards are covered in either English or Mandarin. So the level of collaboration between the two teachers has to be very high because they're covering one set of standards in two different languages. So there might be some review if a particular math concept is kind of foundational and taught in Mandarin. The English teacher might review it. But they don't teach the same stuff in both languages, right? So then when they get to the middle school, as the percent drops a little bit, to 30% in Mandarin, that's because they take their Mandarin language arts class, which really, the focus changes at that level into really the reading and writing as the conversational bit is kind of intact. But the reading and writing, it takes a lot of years to get that part in Mandarin. And then one content area will be taught in Mandarin. It doesn't matter what. We gotta find the teacher to do it, but, you know, that's the idea.
We just wanna thank you for a wonderful program that has just sprouted out. And when we go out and we talk, we brag. We just love you to death, and thank you so much for what you've been doing in the community, and I know they appreciate it. And so as it continues, it just keeps flourishing, and it's because of your leadership. And thank you all very much.
You want the picture?
Some great presentations. Thank you so much. We just love to hear what the kids are doing out there. Okay, at this... Oh, really? Okay, okay. Yeah, at this time, we're gonna have the superintendent's report. Dr. B.
Thank you, Mrs. Marroquine. So it wasn't on my update, but I've gotta do two things. Number one is, as you said, congratulate Dr. Dietrich and the Rondo staff in the Mandarin program and all the programs that he's instituted. Congratulate him for his leadership and really tonight's presentation. Same thing with Mrs. Luna. Her leadership over at Garrettson is, they said it, she said it, dynamic, dynamic. And then both of them, great examples of 21st century education at its best. So congratulations to both school communities. I also wanna congratulate our managers that we, that you approved this evening. Certainly proud of them. A lot of emotion out there. And, you know, it's years in the making. Many of them have, as you guys know... making, many of them have, as you guys know, we met with them in, in closed session, many of them, fifteen, sixteen, twenty years, working hard in various leadership capacities in the district, and then tonight was a culminating event for many of them, and the emotion was raw and real and really, really just a great night, so kudos to all of them. Speaking of kudos, this week, we continue with Classified Employee Week. Give a lot of love to our classified employees and support staff. They, they, they make it happen in, in this community and without, with all of their support, whether it's transportation, whether it's food nutrition, custodial, obviously our TAs, our office, front office staff, the whole team. I mean, they, they make it happen here, we're so thankful for our, for our classified folks, our CSEA. And I do want to also mention that those, Mrs. Marroquín, if you can raise that, that cap, and so all of our employees, yes, thank you, all of our employees, where your future takes flight, CNUSD, so that went out to all of our teachers last week being Teacher Appreciation Day and Week, and, and then this week with our classified staff. So although we had, I want to thank Communications as well for their leadership and, and their branding and putting out the caps out there to, for all the employees, to show the pride that we have for, for our district and the community, so kudos to all of them. Moving on, the Mental Health Month continues, and I, I've asked Brittany to showcase just a brief forty-five second video, which continues, listening to our student voices. So, Brittany?
Mental health is very important to me personally, because I struggle with anxiety. So it's important that I check in on my friends and that my friends check in on me. It always helps to talk about it, it always helps to get help. Everyone goes through different things, people go through mental health issues more severe than others.
Your mental health is just as important as your physical, emotional, and social health.
I want to say that you're not alone around here, what you're gonna do right now, and that it's always a good idea to reach out to those near you for help.
It's okay to talk to someone and tell them how you're feeling.
It is really important to get out there and talk about mental health.
If you're struggling with your mental health right now, don't think you're alone, we see you and we hear you.
There will always be friends and family that will support you throughout the way, so if you ever need help, just ask.
Thank you, Brittany. Also, I want to highlight our Communications Office for their continued work. We have some just phenomenal news. The Sunday, I was talking to Evita Tapia, our administrative director, and she shared with me that through our, our fentanyl public service announcement that, that our office produced, our Communications Office produced, and as you know, through your leadership, we went around all the, our communities and we presented this. The whole fentanyl public service is, is because there's mental health behind that. It first comes from mental health, and, and so it's so critical. But getting back to our Communications Office, we received news that because of the, the video that was done for Eli, we are, we have been nominated by the Emmys, the National Academy for Television Arts and Sciences, for an Emmy. The district is nominated for an Emmy. So yeah, let's give a round of applause. So Saturday, June the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, though, at the Weston Mission Hills Resort in Rancho Mirage, there we will find out if we win the Emmy or not. Again, it's the first time, oh, I'm told, that the Emmys have a, a category for governmental agencies, so we, we've been nominated and we won already, regardless, we won already. So I want to give kudos to Mark Galang for his work and creativity on, on that specific video, and we are so proud of him and our Communications Team for sharing the district's story through videos. I also want to personally acknowledge Evita Tapia and the entire Communications Team for their ongoing work that highlight the amazing success through, throughout CNUSD. The Communications Office has evolved in recent years to being one of the most critical teams throughout our district and really throughout the state of California. We are so fortunate to have our Communications Office that has earned multiple awards, and this Emmy nomination continues to validate the stellar work that our Communications Team continues to produce. So great job, Brittany, and the whole entire Communications Team. And I know I see Peter, and I think Mark might be behind, behind the scenes back there. And again, also want to give kudos to Evita, Lily, and Patty, and I'm forgetting one, but we just, I had a new hire, remind me? Andrea, Andrea. And so with that, lastly, I do want to say that I, I was reflecting this morning, and we're not gonna have another meeting till after our graduations. So I want, on behalf of the Board of Education and our Executive Cabinet, I want to wish our graduating class of twenty-twenty-two a wonderful graduation season. I'm sure everyone is super excited to resume our celebrations in person. I would also like to extend best wish, best wishes to our promoting sixth graders and our promoting eighth graders, so as they will have the promotions also in person. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Marroquín.
Thank you, Dr. B. At this time, we're gonna go with board member reports, so we'll start off, Ms. Dr. Lawless.
Well, okay, thank you, Mrs. Marroquín. First of all, we, we attended the PTA Founder's Luncheon. I enjoyed that very much, meeting the Cabinet members, we're all there, mostly, yeah, we're all there, and then meeting some principals, teachers that I have known through the years. So that's fantastic. The other thing that I want to comment on is that when I first immigrated to the US in nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five, my first job, semi-professional, is ABC Pride at Cal State LA, where we talk about A, Asian Black Chicano Pride. I was new to the country, I'm still learning what those means. And tonight, we have two resolutions. One is on Asian Pacific American Islanders, that was not the term before. And then we have the, the African-American resolution to celebrate Juneteenth. And I, I hope that we all support these two, two resolutions, and I'm sure that it'll be good for the district. I, I just wanted to ask what the implications of that with regards to curriculum, instruction, and community service, so that we pass resolutions, not just on paper, but there's something that we will do. Either add something in the curriculum, or a book, or, or something that speak deeply to the content of what we are doing. And, you know, I've been in education for so many years that the frustration is, we have a resolution, but it doesn't go through the classroom, see? I think one of the things that I would like to request is that to put the, all our school marquees with the Juneteenth Celebration or Asian Pacific American Month, I think that will provide a signal to the community that we are truly valuing diversity in our community. Last Friday, I had a chance to talk to some three hundred to five hundred high school students in Riverside. We were, I was invited to, to speak at the Riverside Twenty-Fourth Annual Summit Conference for High School Kids, the toughest group, because I have not talked to high school kids, I only talk to higher ed people. So it's very challenging, but, but the topic they gave me is diversity, equity, and inclusion. So in a very careful way, I tried my best to really breaking it down to the level that our high school students can, can, can understand. But earlier, I was talking about AXA, your journal, the Administrator's Journal, the Board Journal, they all have DEI there. Those were the sources that I, I used, and if I can do it, I think everybody have access to that kind of book or journal. Yeah, the other thing is, I think that's about it, yeah. I, I'm happy to, to have attended and, and witnessed the, the Chinese Mandarin program. That's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pollak.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple things. As Dr. Bonrostro mentioned about graduation time, and last night, we had, I got to attend Centennial's Senior Awards, and so that was nice to, to kick off the, the celebrations. And so that was, that was nice to see them. I think, again, they have a student in the district with the highest GPA, four point nine something, I believe, going to UCLA, so great. Also, we have a Roosevelt softball player in here, so wanted to congratulate Roosevelt for making the CIF finals D1, so good luck on Friday or Saturday, I'm not sure which one, but good luck, Rosie. Today, I had the opportunity to go to the Special Forces Field Day at Centennial, and Matt Lance was here last meeting discussing that, and it was wonderful. Elizabeth and I were, were there in attendance, and I don't know if anybody else had a chance to go, but it was wonderful to see our students just having a great time, so that was wonderful. And lastly, and most importantly, I just wanted to thank and congratulate Hannah Poore for her time here, and we're gonna miss you, but we look forward to hearing great things about your senior year, and you better come back and visit us. Thank you for your voice for our students and the insight and the input that you, that you gave us, so thank you.
Mrs. Ybarra.
Yes, thank you, Hannah. We always need to hear the student voice, and you're here for us, thank you. And I really thought you were a senior. I'd like to congratulate Corona High students. Ten of them took their woodworking projects to the LA County Fair, and all ten of them won first place. So hopefully, we put them out here like we usually do. They have some pretty awesome tables and cabinets and nice things, they never want to sell them, but I ask. So if you go to the County Fair, look for the Corona High projects. Also, I attended the reclassification at Corona High Banquet. They reclassified thirty-four students. I am so proud of these kids, I mean, it is hard to do that, there's tests. I spoke to a student who had been here, I think, a year and a half, and he reclassified. And he was telling me how hard the tests were and everything, and it was, it was amazing. We sat there and we just cried, right Carlos, the whole night, I mean, just hearing, hearing these students. I also had the honor to attend the California Teacher of the Year Dinner. Congratulations to our very own Garrettson teacher, Kathy McGonaghy, one of three teachers in Riverside County. And also, congratulations to our Communication Team. I can never thank you guys enough for what you do. An Emmy? Really? So we're gonna have to buy a ball gown and everything so we can go to the Emmy? Awesome! Always, we need a, a reason to buy new dress, right? That's right, yeah. So congratulations, and it was amazing to see our kids today. I, I just couldn't believe how many people were in that little hallway. But these kids are amazing, and all the programs that we have in our district, we need to showcase them more than just once a year. I mean, our, our, our community needs to know what we have out there, and tonight, that was, that was a great way to do it, even though it was just two schools, but we put it out there, because whoever's watching, they can see what we do. So thank you so much, Carlos and Lisa and everybody that was behind this, thank you.
Thank you. Before I do my report, Hannah, can you share something that, or maybe whatever you'd like to tell, tell us about your experience this year as being a board member?
Sorry. I just want to say thank you to you guys for this opportunity, because I, I loved it being here, I loved seeing everything behind the scenes and just seeing how, honestly just seeing how it all worked and really being a part of the student voice. I thought that was an amazing opportunity, and I'm so glad I was able to jump on it, and thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. And hopefully, one day, she'll come back and be a board member for CNUSD. So again, today, joined Bill at the Special Forces, it was awesome, so many happy faces, it was a wonderful, beautiful day to do that. Also, last night, I was in Soboba, and in Soboba, we honored our Golden Bell winners, and we did have one of our winners there from Rainey, Rainey Rocks. And Rainey explained their program, and every group got an opportunity to talk about how they have impacted their school. And so we were just so really proud of them, and, and so hopefully, next year, we have three more. So we're looking forward to that, so thank you so much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to go to the Employees Association Reports. So do we have anybody from CNT here? No. Okay, do we have anybody from CSEA? No. Okay, so we're gonna go on to public comment, and we do have two cards, so I'm not gonna read the entire card here, but I'll just go ahead and, just a couple reminders. At this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. Please limit remarks to three minutes or less, comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a meeting held in public and not a public meeting, although the board will not respond to speakers directly, either during public comment or after the meeting. Staff members may conduct speakers, may contact, excuse me, speakers or follow up with a written communication. So we're gonna bring up our first winner, they're both on the same topic, Juneteenth, and so we'll talk to Tim Ballard.
Hello, everybody, good evening.
Evening.
All right. My first board meeting, I'm excited, actually, this has been a lot of fun for me.
Good.
I've got people in my Harvard t-shirts over there, it's my alma mater, I'm like, "Go Crimson." I've got people at Chinese School, I'm like, you know, our kids were in, you know, trilingual immersion school, they still study Mandarin, so, I mean, this is, this is just great. So I'm really enjoying myself. Superintendent Bonrostro, executive staff, and board members, I'm Dr. Timothy Ballard. I am an emergency department physician and a proud father of two children in the Corona Norco Unified School District, they're a fifth grader and a fourth grader. And I'm here to talk briefly about Juneteenth. Now, as you all know here, I'm sure, Juneteenth, June nineteenth, was officially made a federal holiday last year. And you guys are all scholars of history, so you probably know what Juneteenth is about, but a lot of ordinary folks are not familiar with Juneteenth and are just learning about it. So even though our crowd is largely gone, just to mention a little bit about the holiday. This holiday has been celebrated within the African-American community for more than a hundred and fifty years, and it was recognized as a holiday by the state of Texas in nineteen eighty, and by twenty-twenty-one, every state, with I think the exception of South Dakota, had recommended it as a holiday. It took decades of political pressure to push Juneteenth over the finish line and have it designated as a federal holiday. So what is Juneteenth anyway? Well, we've all learned about the Emancipation Proclamation of eighteen sixty-three. President Abraham Lincoln signed it in the middle of the Civil War, declaring that all enslaved people within the Confederacy were free. Now, from a practical standpoint, that proclamation meant nothing until the Confederacy surrendered in April of eighteen sixty-five, and Union soldiers went out to the Confederate states to enforce the end of slavery in those areas. Now Texas was one of the most remote of the Confederate states, and so with the arrival of Major General Gordon Granger and the Union soldiers, they informed the populace there that the Civil War had ended, the Union Army was taking control of Texas, and they were officially free citizens. The next June nineteenth was celebrated to mark the occasion, and that recognition gradually spread to other states over the years. The day became known as Jubilee and Freedom Day and Emancipation Day, among, among other names. Now, my wife, Dr. Yolanda Ballard, and I had the honor of organizing the first Juneteenth celebration for the city of Corona last year. My wife had been encouraging the political leadership of Corona to arrange a celebration of the event, and ultimately decided to take on the challenge herself. And I was recruited as a co-organizer. The program was miraculously put together in two weeks and took place outside of City Hall. The event featured speakers and performers, we had local business leaders and others there. And this year, we are organizing this second annual event, which will be much larger in scale. This will take place at the Circle City Center in Corona from one to five PM, and that's on Sunday, June nineteenth. It's also Father's Day, which is a very interesting coincidence, and so we're also gonna include some, some recognition and of fathers on that day and sort of gear it accordingly. We're going to have, aside from entertainers and speakers, we're gonna include some food vendors and product vendors and even the children's play area, so we hope it's going to be a really enjoyable event this year, and we intend to try to grow it every year.
Okay, we'll, we'll let your wife speak now.
Sure, absolutely, okay. I'm probably over my time just to talk.
Because I know it's gonna continue, it's gonna be strong.
Yes, no, no, come on up.
Are we being mainstream, mainstream?
Yes.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, so while we don't have a lot of people here, we're mainstream.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you.
Oh, hi. Yes, I am Dr. Yolanda Ballard. I am the CEO of the Ballard Health Foundation, which... I am the CEO of the Ballard Health Foundation, which, I was gonna say something, but, okay, I'm on a timer. Let me stick to it. Sorry, I felt nervous, I'm on the timer. So in response to the 2021 Resolution Number Ninety-six, recognizing June nineteenth, twenty-two as Juneteenth, I just want to briefly touch on my childhood and all the memories I have and how excited I was every year to participate in Juneteenth. And I feel really honored that that's a possibility now here in the new community that we live in. I moved here about fifteen years ago from the Midwest. Sorry I missed that. And I just think that would be great for our children as well, in the community, to enjoy this event like I did. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak today about this Juneteenth celebration. We can't thank you enough for your consideration. It would be remembered as a part of a historical moment in Corona, in the surrounding areas and throughout this district, school district. And as he mentioned, it is a federal holiday. This year, we hope you can also enjoy yourselves, but bring, we want to bring awareness to the neighborhoods as we celebrate Independence Day in honor of our ancestors, freedom fighters, our heroes who paid the price and never stopped fighting for freedom. We hope everyone in attendance will walk away with an increased and newfound understanding of the importance of creating a safe environment where everyone can feel valued while celebrating, empowering each other, and educating the community. Our event isn't just about celebrating, but we also want to create an environment where we can listen, learn, grow, and hopefully engage our community into taking personal action towards, towards unity. Again, thank you for your consideration for sponsoring this event. This would not happen without the support of the culturally responsible community members and public officials who shared this vision that the Ballard Health Foundation saw. And in my humble, in my very humble opinion, the two most important national holidays in the United States, it would be Independence Day, which is, you know, the Fourth of July and Juneteenth. Even after many like wars, political pressures have been applied, just after everything that we fought and have gone through, there's been, you know, protests, wars, boycotts, demonstrations, books, letters, speeches, elections, and before the life actually changed for Americans, many lives were lost and painful injuries were suffered for that cause, but the journey of African-American descendant people in the country had begun with unspeakable just, you know, I don't want to go into that too much, but you know, I'm just saying, we've gone through a lot, and now things, this would be part of the solution to making things better for the community. So I just really hope that everyone would celebrate with us if you would consider supporting the event and maybe going forward for the years to come. Thank you very much. Sorry, couldn't get all that out of this big speech here.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay. Okay, now we're gonna move on to consent items. Do I have any pulls? Okay, so without that, can I have a motion to accept the consent, cons, consent items? Thank you. So move second. Okay, Hannah? Okay. Can vote? Thank you. Okay. We're gonna move on to item fifteen, Human Resources. Mr. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Yes, so this evening, we have two executive cabinet contracts that we are bringing forward for recommendation and approval. Part of the process is to read the compensation components of the contracts in open session, so I'll do that now. Pursuant to Government Code Section four, five, nine, five, three, subdivision C three, the board provides this oral summary of the salary infringed benefits as set forth in the proposed Executive Director of Development's employment agreement between the Coronanoco Unified School District and Jeremy E. Goins. The contract term is effective July first, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The annual salary in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars, effective July first, twenty twenty-two. Annual longevity increases in accordance with the board adopted management salary schedule. Paid medical benefits on same terms as other management employees. During the term of the agreement, or any renewal or extension of the agreement, Jeremy E. Goins will be provided a whole life insurance policy with a face value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Executive Director of Development shall have a work year of two hundred seventeen days of full and regular service to the district, each annual period covered by this agreement, exclusive of holidays. The Executive Director of Development shall annually provide a proposed work calendar of duty days and non-duty days to the superintendent for approval. Work performed in excess of the two hundred seventeen day work year shall result in accrual of paid vacation on a day-for-day basis. In no event, however, shall the Executive Director of Development accrue any vacation in excess of fifty days. Zero, point zero six eight accrual days of annual sick leave for each day of service, and the district shall pay for necessary expenses associated with professional growth activities approved by the board. The district shall pay the Executive Director of Development's membership dues in various professional organizations. These shall include, but not be limited to, the Association of California School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators, service clubs, and other such memberships as may be approved by the board.
Thank you, yes. Dr. Llos, go ahead.
Yeah. Director of Development, I assume, in practice, we want, to me personally, the development, Director of Development, right? I think, to me, when I look at development, it's program, or somebody who will be the conscience of the superintendent and the cabinet people. And I think it's so timely tonight that we have very important events like the Juneteenth. I'm assuming that with Jeremy's leadership and involvement in such community service program, I think the term Director of Development will be so fitting, right? All kinds of program, you know, special ed program, we have Latino, Latinx program, African-American program, and I think I'm very looking forward. I was in DC, I look at the National Museum of African-American culture, American culture, you know, it's a big one. I was so excited, and so I said, "Development, Director of Development." I think those are something that we need to engage in, and this is a big opportunity for our friend, Dr. Goins, to move forward with this. I like it.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Well, I just want to comment on this as well. I'm excited for this. You know, I've known Dr. Goins for a while, and it was kind of ironic today, I was in talking to the world-renowned Matt Logan, and he was, he was introducing Dr. Goins to a college coach and said, "This is," and Matt, who I respect greatly, said, "This was the best wide receiver coach I've ever had." And, and, you know, I just thought it was funny, he was talking about that. But talking about development, we've seen him develop as a teacher, as an AP, as a principal, you know, just on up, and so I look forward to what he's gonna continue to do with, with our, our school district. So I'm excited.
Okay, with that, so can we have a motion to accept?
So move.
So move, Dr. Llos?
Second.
Second, Bill. Hannah, she approves, okay?
Congratulations, Dr. Goins, and I know you have some family members who've been waiting patiently in the, in the boardroom. We'd love to meet them.
Yeah, that's. My wife Megan, she supports me in everything. And I'm sending.
Yes, we have another contract. So pursuant to Government Code Section four, five, nine, five, three, subdivision C three, the board provides this oral summary of the salary infringed benefits as set forth in the proposed Chief of Communications employment agreement between the Coronanoco Unified School District and Evita V. Tapia. The contract term is effective July one, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The annual salary of two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars will be effective July one, two thousand twenty-two. Annual longevity increases in accordance with the board adopted management salary schedule. Paid medical benefits on same terms as other management employees. During the term of the agreement, or any renewal or extension of the agreement, Evita V. Tapia will be provided a whole life insurance policy with a face value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Chief of Communications shall have a work year of two hundred seventeen days of full and regular service to the district, each annual period covered by this agreement, exclusive of holidays. The Chief of Communications shall annually provide a proposed work calendar of duty days and non-duty days to the superintendent for approval. Work performed in excess of the two hundred seventeen day work year shall result in accrual of paid vacation on a day-for-day basis. In no event, however, shall the Chief of Communications accrue any vacation in excess of fifty days. Point zero six eight accrual days of annual sick leave for each day of service, and the district shall pay for necessary expenses associated with professional growth activities approved by the board. The district shall pay the Chief of Communications membership dues in various professional organizations. These shall include, but not be limited to, the Association of California School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators, service clubs, and such other memberships as may be approved by the board.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
All right. Due to the retirement of Judy, Judy, right, we are, you've created, Dr. Ben Rosso, you've created these two positions. Is that right?
Yeah, we restructured, yes, sir.
Yeah, so you structured that. Obviously, they have different set of skill sets, skill sets. We know both of them through years of interacting with them, and both of them really do a fantastic job, right? The last person, or maybe, maybe two to three persons ago, who took that job, has a school name after her. That's Phil Rondo. The position that is so, is so important, being on the board for a long time, I always, you hear me about conscience and moral compass. They always create that for us, for the board, for the superintendent, for the cabinet. So they have different backgrounds. One an educator, one who is very, very successful in his work in terms of communication. Do you see the collaboration there? I think, I feel, I will feel more comfortable if, by the creating of those positions, and we talked about it, that you have in mind how to use those skill sets of the two to move even beyond, further, borderless, in terms of the improvement that we're going to do in this district. Can you, can you tell me the roles of each and the collaboration that you want to portray, or at least two separate, departmentalized jobs?
At the end of the day, it's one team, right? It's one team that bring a different set of skill sets like what you mentioned. Jeremy's skill set is one of, was mentioned by Bill, right, has been through the ladder of teacher, administrator, highly competent, twenty-first century skill set, training of our administrators. In fact, today, I walked into a training that's very strategic, training our next level of leaders, which is our, our deans, our APs, and other administrators, and we'll continue that work with our principals. So that's one set. The other is, is that Evita brings is a skill set that's needed and, and highly sought out by superintendents and districts. One of governmental experience and legislative experience, both at Sacramento and at, in Washington, DC. One of communications that is a growing field among pretty much every profession because messaging today is done more and more on media, several various media platforms. So expertise in that. Also, a product in knowing the culture of CNUSD, being a product of CNUSD. They both bring a different skill set that will also join these, the other six that are on executive cabinet, and a skill set that I'm excited to work with. And the, at the end of the day, you want a dynamic skill set, and the entire team brings that dynamic and different roles at each play. And at the end of the day, we need folks, I think this is super important, that's trusting, that they're able to, to lead up and, and tell me what I need to hear, the truth, and we all need to keep each other accountable, and because we set the tone, right? With the Board of Education and executive cabinet, we set the tone for the district. So I'm excited about this opportunity because it really propels the district, that's a phenomenal district, and really sets us up for the future of what twenty-first century education looks like, and we're gonna continue to be a leader in the state.
And they're not the yes people?
They're absolutely not yes people. They will challenge me, and by the way, every single one on executive cabinet will challenge me, and that's what we need. And, you know, I think it's super important that, that I, as has been said before, right, you know, God provides us one mouth and two ears, so we need to listen to our folks.
It's not in the contract, but as, come as practice, can we have a required protocol for, for Evita and Jeremy to really work together in terms of?
There's, there's, it's not, it's, you know, Dr. Llos, we can have, we can write a book that they're gonna work together. At the end of the day, is, it's what is actually the values that we hold and what all of us hold, and that's my responsibility to create the optimum team environment, right? And team environment doesn't mean that it's perfect, because we live in a chaotic society, but what's important is that people, again, are able to express how they feel, and at the end of the day, we make a decision as a team, and when we leave there, it is a team. It's a unified team. And by the way, not for the best interest of communications or best interest of the superintendent, the best interest for CNUSD. It's gotta always be the children.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Barra.
I see both positions complementing each other, and it's what our district needs right now, and I think it's, it's gonna be the perfect team.
Thank you. Mr. Pollard?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Barra. You know, I look at the team, you know, I'll get out of sports, because I always talk about sports, but I'll talk about a choir, you know, you have the soprano, the alto, the bass. You put them together, and it's beautiful music, and I think that this, this team has that, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Hold on one second. So today, when I was at the, at the sports program today, my husband was talking to Dr. Brill, and he goes, "Oh, I remember the fullbacks." He goes, "Mr. Mauro Keane, there's no more fullbacks in football anymore." And so that just gave us a perspective of our mindset, thinking about fullbacks, they're entirely different now. He says, "Only Cathedral High School has those anymore." But the thing is that we're moving forward, and in moving forward, having a team like this, now we can communicate with the millennials who are bringing their children to our schools, and so that's where the communication piece is. So we need to move with the times. Sometimes we want to hold on to the old, but we gotta bring in the new in order to make sure everyone is part of this process. So that is what we mean by a family here. So we're all gonna step up, and I'm sure that both Evita and Mr. Goins will do their jobs. Yes, one more time.
Yeah. So if you add the salary of the two to beyond the salary of Judy, right, do we have the money to do that?
Yeah, so Evita's already on executive cabinet, so we're not adding her base salary. There is a portion of promotion, and Jeremy's the salary that's being added. At the end of the day, checked with our business services, and it's budget neutral.
You like that expression, huh? At the end of the day.
At the end of the day.
At the end of the day, the board will approve it too, right?
Okay. All right, thank you. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, get this time? Second, get this time. Hannah, she approves. Okay, the rest of you, please vote. Congratulations, Evita. Before we move on, I just wanna, uh, for the Ballard's sake here, on page nine of our agenda, we, uh, went ahead and we went, we put those two resolutions. So they have been approved already earlier this evening, so they just let you know. So thank you for your comments this afternoon, or this evening, actually. Wow. Okay, so at this time, our next board meeting will be on June 14th. We're gonna miss you, Hannah. Good luck. And so can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Okay. So can we vote, please, Hannah? You approve. Thank you. And have a good evening. Be safe, and we'll see you in June.